Fellow Planning Board members and fellow audience participant. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Montclair Planning Board. Notice of this meeting is given by placing a notice in the newspaper that is designated for notices for the town. We also posted notice on the first floor, rather, of the municipal building. And notice is also posted on the Planning Board section of the township website. Rather, the meeting is being broadcast live on Channel 34, and it is being streamed live and will be available on demand on YouTube. Excuse me. This meeting is a quasi judicial proceeding, meaning that the board has powers and procedures resembling a court of law. We're obligated to objectively determine facts and to draw conclusions from them in order to provide the basis for official action. Any questions or comments must be limited to issues that the board can legally consider in reaching such decisions and decorum appropriate for judicial hearings should be maintained at all times. First thing on our agenda this evening is the roll call, and I'm here.
Vice Chair Brodak?
I'm here.
Mr. Graham?
Here.
Mr. Ian Wally?
Here.
Ms. Lockman?
Here.
Mr. Ortiz?
Here.
Mr. Pierre?
Present.
Ms. Willis is excused. Chair Winn?
Here.
Mr. Jacobson, that's what you were hearing. Mr. Jacobson is excused, and Mr. Niemann?
Here.
Okay.
Okay. We have minutes from the March 27 meeting.
And I received comments on the minutes from Vice Chair Brodak. Are there any other changes? Motion to approve the minutes as amended? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Just me.
Okay.
Okay, we have the resolution, 182 Glen Ridge Avenue.
I didn't get the right resolution here.
M&amp;M Tylic LLC.
Yeah, I didn't put it in the right order in my book here. Is there a motion to approve or any comments on the resolution to extend the approval for 182 Glen Ridge Avenue?
Yes, I have a comment. My associate sends you all his regards, okay?
He did a nice job, Art.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Can I just ask you a question, Janice?
Yeah. Granted, we have a two-year extension of this, and once he starts building, right, then that's the kickoff time, right?
It's a one-year extension.
Oh, sorry, one-year extension. So is there any timeframe for when somebody who started building has to complete the job?
Not, not to my knowledge. You know, at that point, the permit's filed with the Building Department, and I'm not been made aware from the Building Department that once they start construction, that there's any timeframe that it has to be completed.
Right.
We don't have anything in our ordinance on that.
So, I mean, I know, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That said, in some municipalities, they do put timeframes in the resolution to begin or to complete, but as long as I've been here, I haven't really seen that in our resolution, so I don't bother to put it in.
Well, I'm not talking about the specific resolution, I'm talking about the question in general.
Once construction starts, we really don't see a problem with the completion. I mean, the longest thing that we've had lying around for years and years is the parking dock.
Sure.
And that's because there were things that were going on in hearings and disputes.
Right.
But, you know, I think where the biggest delays are is from the time of getting an application as to whether somebody builds, acts upon it, because there's applications that we approve, but they never get acted upon.
No, there's just, there's a house in my neighborhood that they started work on it a couple of years ago, and it seems like they've stopped working on it. So I don't know if there's a timeframe where they have to complete the job. And from what you're saying, you don't think there is, yeah?
There might be building code issues.
Building holders?
It might be building code issues, depending on what they've done.
Yeah, it's been ongoing and not ongoing for quite a while now.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have the amendment to the land use circulation plan section, environmental stability section, sustainability. Excuse me, it's been a long day.
Are there any additional changes to the ordinance besides what Vice Chair Brodak added? Any comments on the environment?
The resolution.
This is the master plan.
Right, just the resolution.
Yeah. Is there a motion to approve the resolution as amended?
Chair, so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Want to break up the room?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Yeah.
And then finally, excuse me, 103 Grove Street.
The applicant has requested that the resolution be taken off tonight's agenda.
Do you want to carry that to the April 24 meeting?
Correct.
Is there a reason why?
It was your changes.
Could be.
No, I'm kidding. I'm kidding. There were some last-minute discussions that we had as a result of the, as a result of...
Your mic.
Oh, sorry. Yes, there were some last-minute changes as the result of the access issue. You'll recall, that's the primary issue why they came back. And because there were last-minute changes, I didn't have time to get them to Mr. Schkolnick and time for him to review with his client and others, and so rather than feel the pressure of that, they simply asked if we could just remove it and put it back on in two weeks.
Okay.
If there's any, if there's any update to their negotiations with NJ Transit within that time, will that impact the resolution?
I'm sorry.
Perhaps they finalized that agreement that we discussed, would that impact the resolution if that...
That, no, that agreement, you mean, agreement with NJT?
With NJ Transit, yeah.
No, that has not, to my knowledge at least, that has not yet come to fruition.
If that...
The resolution has already been decided. This is just a memorialization of the resolution.
Oh, okay.
If something happened that might change the circumstance, then they would have to come back, and they might seek to, they might seek to try and amend the, or try and amend the proceeding or whatever. I don't know what the official name for the process would be at this point, but we'd have to, you know, take a look at it and see whether there's something that we could do without having them start a whole new, you know, proceeding again. But, you know, that's kind of how it would work. This resolution is what it is at this point.
Okay, yeah, fair enough.
It's just the wording to make sure that everybody's on the same page. That's what part is trying to work out with the applicant council.
So it's not having to do with their negotiations, it's the wording of our, it's just purely the wording of our resolution?
Yes.
Okay.
To make sure it reflects, everybody's in agreement with what it reflects.
But if, for whatever reason, they were not able to get the agreement with Transit in place, that would, that would create a big problem. And they'd have to come back for, they came back for amended site plan this last time, they would have to come back again because it's too substantial a change.
Understood, thanks.
But they're very confident, or at least they're very hopeful, that they are going to have the agreement with TNJ.
All right. That brings us to the master plan reexamination report discussion.
And I know I gave you a lot of paperwork on this in the packet, but this is really an outline, and I want to get an idea of who's interested. Discuss the approach with the, with the planning board about how to do a comprehensive review of our master plan. So my suggestion is, what I have in here is really the introduction, which includes the statutory requirements for a master plan reexamination report, which has to be done every six years, and it's very structured. As you can see, there's Section A, Section B, that needs to be included in this report. So what I provided in my handout to you is the introduction, and then Section 2, which is just reiterating the recommendations that were included in the 2016 report. Because what we need to do is look at those recommendations to see if they're still valid or if they've been addressed or if something new has come up. So that's what I've included, I've made no comments on that, and I really think we should put those on the back burner for right now, because I think the next, the other required section of the reexamination report is an evaluation of the changes in the assumptions and the policies, the background information, et cetera, et cetera. And that's basically the lens through which you, the planning board, should evaluate the 2016 reexamination report and all the elements of the master plan.
Janice, those items seem related, and would they require, I'm assuming they would require outside consulting?
No.
No? We can, how could we determine, though, the impact of, you know, new development and whether goals of the 2016 master plan were...
That's what I do. I'm a licensed, we have, you have two licensed professional planners who work for the township. This is what we do.
Would, what about things like traffic and, you know, use of our utilities and, you know, things, the sewer, things like that? How could we study that?
Well, we don't have to study that. Let me tell you, if you, if you sit back, I'll explain to you what's included. Number one is looking at what were the recommendations in the previous plan, one of which was to do a utility, utility element of the master plan. That wasn't done.
Right.
So it's simply, it wasn't done, if that's still a priority, we can make that a recommendation to do it. That's, you don't need to hire an engineer to make that determination. This is your...
Who would make the determination, then?
This, well, you would make the recommendation. Ultimately, it's the council that decides if they want to provide the funding for it. Okay? But that's not, essentially, what we're doing is we're examining all of the documents, and all you need is a licensed professional planner, and you've got two of them on staff, myself and Tommy, who can lead you through the process. We're not doing a new master plan element.
And we're not doing the actual work of the, of the drilling down to the facts. What we're basically determining is, does the drill down need to take place?
Right.
Okay.
So if, for instance, if we decide that traffic is a problem on Bloomfield Avenue, we, we're not going to hire the traffic consultant to come in and study it. We're going to make a recommendation that it needs to be done because of X, Y, and Z, and then it's up to, you know, go back to the council to get funding to actually do that.
Right, exactly. So there's a lot of steps to the process, and that's why I wanted to take the time to explain it to you tonight. So number one is evaluating all the recommendations in the 2016 report. Another component of this is, again, looking at the changes in the policies. And if you see what I handed out to you, starting on page nine, I've tried to pull together a lot of that information. You know, we've got demographic information, housing information, affordable housing information, a list, a summary of all the development that's taken place or been approved since 2016. There's been, and I'm not, again, it's pretty exhaustive, I'm not going to go through all of it, retail trends, office trends, development trends, transportation. I reached out to New Jersey Transit and got very good, up-to-date data on the use of our train stations. We've got information on bus ridership. So I think all of these things are included to kind of give you an idea, because we've had some major changes, and that's why I think this is a great time to do this. COVID has changed almost every aspect of living and working in Montclair, and what we're, I'm trying to do is get as much information to you so that we can evaluate our policies and decide, you know, what changes are necessary. Okay? Not to actually do a new master plan element, but I basically provide a map of what needs to be done over the next 10 years and what's, what's the greatest priority. I did, and then I also summarize what we've done since 2016. We've done a lot of work here in Montclair in terms of various planning studies and redevelopment plans, parking studies. That was actually done, I believe, in 2016, the parking study. But there has been a lot that's been, that's taken place, also at the county level, information on climate change, technology, and of course, ordinance changes. Today, I was able to get parking information from our parking utility. Essentially, you wouldn't be surprised that parking levels in our parking decks have decreased between, I have 2019 and 2023. Again, I wasn't able to include the report because I got it today, but those are the kinds of things that I think we should include in our evaluation. So once we have all of that, the data that provides the basis for what's changed since then, we then have to look at the master plan. And that includes the unified land use and circulation element. It includes the conservation element, the historic preservation element, the housing element. It includes the stormwater element, but I don't really think we need, we just redid that. I think we're okay with stormwater. But I do think we need to take a good look at conservation and historic preservation. And my suggestion is, and of course, the Unified Land Use and Circulation Plan. My suggestion is that you, the planning board, should focus first on the Unified Land Use and Circulation Plan. That's a huge document, as you know, it's about 200 pages. And then ask the Historic Preservation Commission to do an evaluation of the historic preservation element, and the Environmental Commission to do an evaluation of the conservation element, and report back to you. And perhaps you can work through the Master Plan Subcommittee, but it would bring those organizations into the process. We also have to, we don't have to, but my suggestion is to take a good look at the housing element in Fair Share Plan, bring in the Housing Commission, they would love to be involved in that. I'm not sure exactly what our, what our requirements will be because of state, changes at state, at the state level. Housing elements, what's called the fourth round of affordable housing are due in 2025. Our number has been zero for the past, I don't know, 15 years because we're an urban aid municipality. I don't know if that's going to change, but I do think we should take a close look at the housing element as well, because that goes back to 2009.
So on that, specifically with the fourth round coming up?
Yeah.
Does it make more sense to do something in advance of those fourth round announcements, or does it make sense to wait until those are out to understand for the housing?
I don't think we're going to adopt any, this year, I don't think we would need to adopt any master plan elements this year. I think that what we need to do is evaluate it. My question would be, well, and I don't know the answer to this, what are the chances that we're no longer an urban aid municipality? Are we going to lose that designation? And if so, what are the ramifications? If you, you're a planner, so you kind of know the calculations that have to be done using the judge's methodology, so there's a lot of work that needs to be done. And rather than putting it all upon you, I would bring in these other organizations to help evaluate it and report back to you, and this would probably take, you know, the majority of this year to get through it. But luckily, you're not under the gun to get this done. We don't, we have until 2026, but I think it's good to do it now and be ahead of it, and I don't see any reason why not to do it, because so much has changed.
And it's probably a good idea, you know, you've mentioned a few organizations, but there are other organizations in town that could contribute information and framework and whatever, so I think we should be as inclusive as possible.
Right. And I think, so that's how I'd like to broadly work on this project or get this done. If anybody has any suggestion on additional organizations that we should bring into this process right now, let me know, and I'll coordinate all that outreach. But for the Unified Land Use and Circulation Plan, if you look on, starting on page 22 of the handout that I, I prepared, what I did is I went through the plan, and it's broken up into two sections, well, three sections, goals and objectives, you know, that's pretty straightforward. Do, are they still valid or not? And that is your decision, because this is your plan. And I think that's pretty straightforward. But then there's these, all these township-wide strategies, and I've categorized them, and I think I gave you a little table at the beginning of my, right, attached to my memo. Transportation and parking, land use and, I don't know if I, land use and parking. I don't know if I have that right, I'll have to double check.
I think it's mobility, not parking.
Yeah, I think, it's land use and mobility, right?
Yeah, parking is used throughout.
That didn't seem right.
That's not correct, yeah.
Okay, so transportation and parking, land use and mobility, neighborhood character, flexible, affordable, urban, suburban lifestyles, economic development in the arts, and infrastructure and utilities. So what I'd like to do is kind of assign whoever's interested in any of those topics to take part in it, you know, and we can maybe create subcommittees and do Zoom meetings to delve into these issues in more depth. And essentially, what I did was I, what are the recommendations in the plan? I put them in these tables. What are our comments? Are they still valid, et cetera? So that's how to take, how to address the township-wide strategies. Then there's the area-specific strategies, which start on page 27 of the outline that I handed out to you. And I tried to summarize at the beginning what our zoning ordinance is, you know, the different zone districts, and then what the land use plan recommendations are. And then there's, I think, six or seven different areas for the area-specific strategies, which is Montclair Center, WaChong Plaza, Walnut Street, South End, Upper Montclair, Montclair Heights, whatever, and Valley Van Vleek. So there's all those different areas. If you have a specific area of interest, I'll put your name on it, and we can create subgroups to work on evaluating the recommendations for those. So that'll give us a, I think, I'll get a feel by focusing, having people who have an area of interest can focus on those subjects, at least we can move through this process.
I had a different way of looking at it. I think, looking at your page two, where you outlined the sections, just like you just described, I was thinking it might, eventually, the whole planning board is going to look at each of these items anyway.
Absolutely.
So why not break it down and, once a month, have everybody look at, for example, transportation, mobility section and talk about it? And that way, we're talking about it at a public meeting also, right? It's going to be a public meeting.
And that's exactly how it will work, but I'll have, sorry. But we'll have people prior to that full discussion, the people who have, we will meet prior to that, or I will meet and Tommy will meet with people prior to that, who are, have that area of interest and might be able to point out things, because they live in that neighborhood that we're not aware of. And they'll add to, you know, they'll, they'll have the first shot of it, and then we'll have a bigger discussion at the planning board.
Yeah, I think the idea is that we, we get more information, the subcommittees or the groups will gather information.
Right.
And not necessarily make a, make a determination, but more so report back to the full planning board for a discussion about, well, here's what we found, and this is that, and, and that's how it, you know, they will do like the homework for the discussion.
Yeah, I get it. I just thought that, like, there's, that would be, if we looked at one of these areas once a month as a board, we'd get through this in a year, basically. I mean, you could do it more than once a month, but then you'd have, the planning board as a whole would look at transportation and mobility, and we'd discuss that, and we'd have a public, it would be in the public domain, so gradually, the public would get to know exactly what we're thinking on a...
Yeah, and I, and I agree. I think that's, I think that's the way we plan to do it.
Okay.
But just to get to that point, rather than have me on my own and Tommy put together the recommendations, I find it better to work with the people who have a special interest in that, to help me prepare the report, and I only, you know, I only have two ears, you know, I like to hear what people who, if you have a vested interest in a certain subject or a certain area, then let's talk about it, and then, then we'll put together a little presentation, and we can, again, make monthly, have monthly meetings at the planning board.
And if you want to get, if you want to get input, say, from, like, with the South End, if you want to get input from the South End Business Association, we've got to get that in between the meeting.
Yeah.
You know, and it's going to take time to set up that, you know, so we can, we can get going with monthly focuses, but we've got to lay the groundwork, you know, in order to get, get that going.
Right. Does the South End have a business improvement district?
No.
No, so the only business improvement district is the Bloomfield Avenue corridor?
It is.
What, was WaChong have a...
But there's, there's business owner groups.
They're business owner groups, but it's...
They're just not a specific district.
Yeah, but it's not a town-sponsored business...
No, no.
Yeah, okay. So for instance...
Montclair Center isn't town-sponsored either. They collect a property tax, but that's not, that budget's not coming from the town, it's coming from a tax levied on their own membership.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
I thought there was some issue about, you know, some council people shouldn't be voting on this because they're...
The council approves the budget, but they're not saying, here's a million-dollar check to the Montclair Center bid. Montclair Center has a specific share of a property tax, a special improvement district tax, that's levied on the properties within it, and that's going to include the foray commercial, or the foray commercial properties in the district and possibly the forsee apartments.
And why is it just the Montclair, I mean, I know it's the biggest district, but why isn't that also happening in, you know, South End, WaChong Avenue, Upper Montclair?
Because they have to, they have to agree to increase taxes, and they have to have a plan on how those, how those payments are going to be made. Quite often, when you tell, say to the businesses and the property owners that, okay, you want a business improvement, well, we're going to have to levy a tax increase.
Yeah, not every property owner likes the idea of being levied with a tax, or feels like they're getting any value out of what the bid does.
Exactly.
Yeah, I get it.
And they need to want it, and so they, it needs to come from the business districts, and then they also need to realistically be big enough to make it worthwhile, because you get a real economy of scale, but you need to reach a certain point where that starts to make sense, as opposed to a more informal organization.
When we did the master plan, but this, this approach, as John knows, is very similar to the approach that we did when we were doing the original master plan in 2014. Remember, we, the consultant went out there, spent a year after we did all our community outreach and came up with a draft plan, presented the draft plan to the planning board, and the planning board's response was, well, this is not what we wanted. So we did the same thing. We broke it up into different groups, and we sat down together and, and, you know, wordsmithed the different sections, and each subcommittee came before the full planning board and made a recommendation, the planning board discussed it, and that's kind of how we got to adopting the plan after four years. So it does take a lot of time, but I do think it was thoroughly discussed, and we got a lot of insight into how board members felt.
Yeah, and we want to make sure that we get, it's not, it's, it's, yeah, it's our insight, but we want to make sure that we get feedback from the community on these various sections.
That's what I was going to say, yeah, right.
And that's the kind of thing, but we don't want to do it in a hearing kind of format. It's better if we, if the subcommittees can sit down and we'll have a meeting with them, and so people can talk and discuss things, and then we can figure, okay, well, then out of this meeting, here's what we've, here's what we are saying, and then that can be brought to, to the full board.
Right.
For us to then discuss and consider what's been said.
Yeah, I mean, I'm very focused on making sure that the public is involved in the discussion all along and understands what our ideas are, what has changed, what has changed, where do we think the master plan should be going. There's, you know, there's debate even on this, this panel, whether we need more development or less development, or more bike lanes or less, you know, no bike lanes. So I think, I think the public should have input to that as well as we go through this process, not, not, it needs to be totally transparent, is what I'm really trying to say, yeah.
I agree. I do think that it's, there's a lot of value in having these small working groups do the background analysis. I also think, and this is again what we did when we did the master plan, is we had a schedule, you know, and we had, we'd put on the agenda, I mean, it was loose, because you have to be able to adjust things, but it was on, when a subject was on the agenda for discussion, it was well advertised, we had it posted, people knew that, that's the one... People knew that that's, the Walnut Street Station area or the Wauchung, whatever, was on the agenda, and they were invited to come and attend.
Yeah, that's what I'm hopeful for.
There's no public notice for this?
Oh, I didn't think that. I just want to make sure.
But it's going to be on the agenda, and perhaps, you know, we'll be able to post this on the website, you know, a flexible schedule, which allows us to make changes as things, you know, I don't want to commit to something.
Something takes longer, right, in order to get through, you know.
Yeah.
But you get my point.
Absolutely, and I agree.
It should be transparent to the public. The public should have input because this is really their master plan in some ways, not just ours, yeah. The other thing I had a question about is, I'm sure there's other people besides me that doesn't really understand the COA. I mean, I know a little bit about it, but I don't understand everything that's going on with COA. And I think that we should know that, right? We should have some kind of summary of what that's all about, if we could. I mean, and I, quite honestly, I do know something about it, but.
The professionals don't understand.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Even the licensed professional planners, and we have, what, three or four up here? It's convoluted and complicated.
Yep, I get that.
But we, yeah, absolutely.
But we should have some sense of, yeah, what that's all about. Because I mean, I've said to people.
Don't expect to have a concrete answer.
No, no. I mean, I've gotten in trouble for saying, oh, we've met our affordable housing quota or whatever to people. And they're like, well, we don't have hardly any affordable housing. But I understand that we have met, as you just said, it's zero required.
It's zero.
So we have better.
We have 700 units.
Yes, yes, so.
Unfortunately, there's a huge demand.
So that explanation seems to, should be out there in some, out there in the public.
It's been, it's been put out there several times. But it hasn't been, we haven't discussed it in a while because it hasn't been an issue in a while. But, you know, it's something, again, that you can, you could, guys can bring us up to date on the latest turn, you know, about what, where it's headed. And we can go over the calculation that they.
The calculation is the calculation.
The calculation, you know, for better or worse, that's what we're stuck with, so.
Yeah, yeah, so.
So just one more thing about the affordable housing. There should be other ideas about how to get affordable housing in town. Oh, I was just saying, there should be some other ideas about how to get affordable housing in town, which I really never see discussed. I mean, I've talked with people and saying, we should maybe have a restaurant tax, 50 cents on every meal should go into a housing pot, something. I'm just throwing stuff out there. A flip tax that you put money into a trust fund, a, oh, I don't know, whatever. There's other things that I've talked about, but things like that. I mean, should we be considering something like that rather than counting on, you know, the 20% affordable housing that's always, you know, negation?
So we do have $2 million sitting in our trust fund.
I understand that, yeah, it's been sitting there for a while. So what's going on with that is another question. Anyway, sorry, I'm talking too much.
I've got a couple of things. And one, I like Janice's approach of going out because it allows us to go out to the community rather than having them come to us. So really, you know, making sure we're meeting at odd hours that we may not consider normal, but other people who have two jobs or family obligations may be able to make. I think that's really valuable and important and allows us to come to them rather than them go to us. With regards to other forms of revenue, the state severely constricts what municipalities can do to collect revenue. So a restaurant tax, not really legal. You know, one of the real issues in New Jersey municipal government is the, really the only way they can raise money is the property tax. So that would require a lot of state action to enable municipalities to have the flexibility to adopt new forms of revenue. That's why, one of the reasons marijuana is so popular is it's a non-property tax revenue source and something that people really would look for. And I think it also, it'd be great to have someone come in and talk over the latest on COA because, yeah, it is complicated and always changing. And, yeah, so I second that as well.
Tony, you want to?
I'd volunteer for three if it's not too many. We had a transportation committee years ago that Don C. ran it. It was pretty good, so I wouldn't mind kind of contributing to, A, transportation, land use through, you know, our zoning subcommittee, which is sort of an extension. And then I already did a little bit with infrastructure and utilities, so I'd volunteer for that as well.
And I think, I liked your idea, Janice, about the planning board subcommittee helping to quarterback some of this. I think our meeting last time on the environmental section was fruitful. And I think we should probably meet and discuss and put a strategy together for the outreach to the community and for reaching out to the individual members to gauge their interest. So I'd be happy to set that up, Keith, you're right, and we'll get, in, in the, you know, coming days. I think it would be helpful to have a subcommittee meeting.
Absolutely, okay. So which subcommittee are you talking about?
I'm on, I'm talking about the, the.
Master plan?
Master plan subcommittee.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I guess, Tony, exactly what you did, you told me what your areas of interest are. If there's anybody else here?
Well, everybody else here should be contacting Janice to let her know what their areas of interest are.
You could, you can reach out to me separately. I'm certainly going to reach out to Carol and, who else is not here? Carol and Jeff.
Mr. Jacobson.
Because I'm sure they have their areas that they want to get involved with.
Do you think it would be possible for each of the committees to attempt to prioritize the lists? Because the lists are, I'm not sure where the prioritization could come in. It's awfully hard to do that in a way, but, because when you look at these lists, you wonder, where do I start? Do I start at number eight? Do I start at number nine?
That's a good place for these, because it's, 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 you look at how long this is.
Yeah.
It's intimidating. So if there's something that, if we start off with prioritizing the recommendations, remove, if it's no longer valid, let's get rid of it, you know? And then we can get into the meat of it. I think that that would be wonderful, you know?
I think it's going to take several meetings to dig into this.
I anticipate this taking a year, you know, to do it right.
Right.
So I.
Or more, depending on how many applications we have, too.
Well, that's true, too. And I think also that, you know, there's going to be things that we'll dig into and say, you know, we need more data on that, you know? If it's, we don't have the right transit data, we need something different. So I think there's going to be things that these small groups and committees are going to come up and say, we need more information. And that's going to be another month before we, you know, receive that and can digest it. So I just, I think it's going to take a while. I think we're going to have all those, we won't call them bumps in the road, but, you know, those issues of like, where do we start? How do we go through this? And every group is going to do it slightly differently.
And what I, maybe what I can do is I can set up a webpage for this, and I can put in, you know, the different sections as separate documents. You know, the introduction, which provides the framework, the background information, which will be up as more, that'll constantly be updated. But if we post it, you want to know what the demographic data is, what the housing data is, what the bus traffic, train traffic, whatever. It'll all be there. We can look at it, and if it's, something needs to be reevaluated, we can do that. But it'll, we can post it so it's available to everybody, at least for the background information. I don't, I wouldn't want to post, you know, all these tables, all the other tables because I think that needs to be winnowed down. Nobody wants to look at, you know, 25 pages of tables.
But it's good to have it posted, too, so that the public can look at it, too. And, you know, and the different groups that we will be seeking input from will have a chance to examine it also.
Yeah, I could do that. So I think this is, it's going to be, right now, things are a little, it's not quite as busy with applications, so I think we have the time to put these on the agenda and work together on this. And I think that's a good approach.
So first order of business is getting the preferences to Janice so we can set up the subgroups, you know? And then for the, you know, after that, we need to meet with Janice, get some background, and then figure out exactly how the subgroups, each individual subgroup has to figure out how they're going to tackle, you know, what they're, what they're going to do.
Yeah.
Yeah, the Environmental Commission has a meeting on this Wednesday, but a week from Wednesday, so that'd be the 19th. And so we're going to put this item on the agenda for the 19th.
Okay.
So if there's anything specific you want me to relay, or if you'd like to attend, or however you want to do that, let me know.
I'll, I'll work on that. So I don't think I even outlined the recommendations in the conservation element yet. But did I do, I don't think, but that's something, I can do that for your meeting, and either Tommy or myself will attend.
Okay, and I, my goal is really just to brief the Environmental Commission on what the ask is and maybe talk about the timing.
Maybe we'll do it in a different meeting.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it needs to be substantive at this point, but if there's anything specific that you'd like me to relay, I can do that. And then my only other thing is for the background information, we did get Sustainable Jersey Silver last year, so not bronze anymore.
Well, congratulations, that's great. I know you, I know, didn't you put together the package that was submitted?
I helped, yeah.
Yeah.
But it's a lot of folks in the green team, the Environmental Commission, and you did quite a bit.
Right, good.
Everybody helped.
So, okay.
Sounds like a plan.
Sounds like a lot of work.
And that's it? Well, any update on Akawana?
I can't, there's nothing that I can report.
Nothing she's talked about. How about our new member, our council member? Do we know?
I have not heard. I mean, I wasn't here last week, so maybe some, if something happened, I was not informed, so.
Anything else we should know about?
That's a broad question. I can't talk about any, you know, pending applications because they will, they will come to you when they come to you. So, no, I think we've got, you've got a lot on your plate for now, so.
All right.
Okay.
And there don't seem to be any other committee report issues. So we've got the bill payment.
I didn't see any bills unless there were hard copy bills.
No, there were no bills.
No bills.
No bills to pay?
No bills to pay.
All right. And if there are none.
Not for lack of trying.
Talk to your associate about that.
No other business, I move that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resentations?
Thank you, everyone.